I'd like to call to order our City Council meeting today for March 1st, 2021. I would also like to thank those who are in attendance today as this is a very difficult meeting for all of us here in City Council as we are mourning the loss of Councilmember Jim Meisner. And we will be paying some special tribute to Jim and his contributions to the City of Canyon City today, but first would like to call to order with a roll call.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Here.
Councilmember Haquez?
Yeah.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Here.
Mayor Smith?
Here. And I'd like to call Joe Garkovich from the Mercy Today Ministries to offer us comfort of prayer and peace during this difficult time.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let us pray. Almighty God, we thank you for another day in which to serve you. As these men and women gather this evening for this important work, we pray that you would grant them compassion, courage, and wisdom to make the right decisions for all that are involved. And we would also like to lift up the family of Jim Meisner during these difficult times. We pray that you would walk with them, give them a peace of mind and a calmness of spirit. In all these prayers, we send to you in Christ's name, amen.
Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We are going to start with a moment of silence in commemoration of City Councilmember Jim Meisner. So please join me in a moment of silence. The City Council would like to join together in the reading of Resolution Number 7, Series of 2021. This is a resolution of the City of Canyon City, Colorado commemorating the life of Councilmember Jimmy Meisner. We'll start with Frank with the first line and then move all the way down council to finish it.
Whereas Jimmy Meisner was born July 12th, 1954 in Platteville, Colorado, and?
Whereas Jim Meisner served in the U.S. Air Force for four years, working as a radio technician, and?
Whereas Jim and his wife Jolene moved to Canyon City in 1980, and?
Whereas Jim worked for Paperwork Incorporated and then the Colorado Department of Corrections until his passing, receiving the Community Service Award from the Colorado Department of Corrections for his many achievements and involvements, and?
Whereas Jim, along with his wife Jolene, believed in active participation in community and civic affairs, serving as a volunteer for numerous activities, including the Chad Whitney Memorial Foundation, Blossom Music and Festival Parade, Fremont Center for the Arts Brew Fest, Fremont County Foundation, Cub Scout and Boy Scout Leader, Coach for Bay Ruth, Bambino's Baseball, Orchard of Hope Foundation, 10 years on the Canyon City School District Accountability Committee, and 20 years on the Chamber of Commerce Christmas Parade of Lights, and?
Where Jim received numerous community awards for his work, including 2017 Colorado Lions Foundation Humanitarian Award and 2014 Distinguished Citizen Award from the Canyon City Chamber of Commerce, and?
Whereas Jim was elected to City Council for the City of Canyon City in 2015, keeping his finger on the pulse of fiscal responsibility, community-mindedness, and a desire to do his best for Canyon City, serving the city for two terms from 2016 to current.
Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Canyon City does hereby commemorate the life of Jim Meisner and honor him for his dedication to the community and will fly the flag half-staff until his internment, dated this first day of March, Normally, at a City Council meeting, Jim would be sitting right next to me. It's really hard to have this empty. He would keep me in line. He would pass notes under this big sheet of glass saying, hey, you need to remember to ask for discussion. Hey, here's a point of order that we need to make sure that we do. Can I see a map? And he kept me in check. He was a good friend, an amazing leader, and I know we all have a lot that we want to say. Usually, before I can even finish reading a resolution or a point of interest, Jim would already have his button pressed to speak first, 100% of the time. And before I even came up to the dais today, there's already a list of councilmembers that have a wish to speak in honor of Jim Meisner. And I would like to go ahead and let each and every one of you have a chance to make your comments and recognize that Councilmember Jim Meisner also has a number of people in the audience and would like to welcome and invite you, if you wish to share any thoughts, to City Council or to the public at large in Canyon City that we would welcome you to come and do so. First, we'll start with Councilmember Reed.
I started to write something down, but every time I do that, it doesn't come out right, so. The thing that I kept thinking after I found out that Jim had passed away was just this burning purpose and desire of these big shoes that he left to fill and the example that he set for all of us as people. He would always say things like, to remember to keep your family first, but yet he served and he served and he served, and I'm just so thankful for that example. It's been really challenging being new to City Council and then with this crazy year on top of it. Jim has always been a reassuring voice of reason and calm in a very chaotic world. It's really hard to see his spot tonight. A little thing that might seem silly is that I always got to vote after Jim. And so I think that's going to be the part that is going to stick with me, and I'm just thankful for the example that he set. And I really take it to heart, the shoes that we have to fill to be able to continue to serve this town because Jim loved this town. He loved these people and he took his responsibility seriously. And I just hope that because of his example, we're all able to continue to do the same. Thank you for all of his family for coming tonight and sharing him with us. He was a blessing.
Councilmember Haquez?
The one thing I'd like to say right now is, you know, sitting where I'm at, it's going to be real weird and awkward because Jim had the unique way whenever he was getting ready to talk about a subject, whatever it is, you know, and I always look over that way. And he had that unique way of just like leaning forward with regards to, is everybody listening to what I'm going to have to say? Because he always made good sense in everything that he said. The one thing about Jim is when I was getting back on council, we had a sit-down before then and we talked. He asked me things about how I felt with regards to the city and City Council. And you know, that lets you know that he was somebody that was real concerned with each and every one of the people that represents the citizens of Canyon City. You know, he reached out to anybody he could and whether we all agreed 100%, which we mostly did, Jim was the kind of guy, he respected why you didn't agree with him and he respected the fact that you had the right to disagree with him. But that never changed his overall opinion with regards to how he felt as each, every one of us as a councilmember because it expressed the fact that he could bring up things that other people may not have thought of doing, you know? And like Ashley said, when they, every meeting we started with regards to stuff, you can always count on Jim to be there to say something with regards to something that was on our agenda regardless of where it was at. And that's the one thing that I want the citizens out there that are watching to realize that this was the kind of gentleman he was. He looked out, and each and every one of us, but he looked out for things that were betterment to the town of Canyon City and everything else. He looked at stuff that maybe we had forgot about, like the recycling van, you know? All of a sudden, he says, hey, you know, we've got all these bins up there. What are we going to do with them? So he brought back things that we had, in a sense, kind of forgot about. And he let us remember, we shouldn't forget about those things. So that's the kind of guy Jim was, and I'm going to miss looking over there and not seeing him with his lean down when he goes to talk. I'll miss him very much. He was a gentleman, and God bless him.
Councilmember Hammack?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to say a few words in remembrance of Jim, and I'm likely to echo what others have said and what others will say after me, and that's a tribute to Jim all in itself that we all had such a clear view of what a good person he was. Every person leads a public life and a private life, in the case of Jim, and in the case of Jim, a civic life. Jim was an exemplary citizen in his civic life, both through his work as a volunteer and a representative of the people with his years of service on the council. Jim was what our founding fathers envisioned as being a citizen legislator and, in my view, an ideal one. All of us on council could count on Jim to closely review each proposed expenditure as he endeavored to help our city spend money wisely, efficiently, and frugally. For me, he was the council historian. He always was comparing current proposals against past comments and commitments in his quest to ensure all engaged in governance were held accountable. On the personal level, Jim was always ready with a smile, a witty comment, always made in the spirit of good humor, and was able to laugh and joke with all who gathered in this chamber. He was a humble man who enjoyed the give and take of daily life and helped others. Jim Meisner was a man who helped those around him become better people, and for that, I am thankful. Jim will be greatly missed.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Well, like John said, you know, we're all going to say things that are going to be very similar, and the one thing John touched on is Jim made us become better people here. I have turned to Jim many, many times in council and even afterwards and talked to him and just, can you give me some advice? And even after meetings, he would pull me sometimes and just say, hey, you know, you got to think this or do this, not saying do it his way, but he says, do it your way, Jim. Do what you feel is right. I'm going to be lost here because we had our little things like Ashley did too, you know? I mean, if I had a piece of candy sitting on here, he would be just sitting there going, you know, tapping here. But my heart goes out to your family, what a blessing it is and an honor it is that I've got to know Jim on the level I did. I was speaking to a very close family, a friend of you guys, Joe McGrell, and Joe says the community doesn't realize what it's lost, and I think that's true. We have lost an unbelievable member of our community, and I just want to say thank you for sharing him with us.
Councilmember Smith?
I wasn't sure if I was going to be able to talk tonight, but I just echo everything that everybody said. I'm sure going to miss him saying, have a good night, kiddo.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
So I think what I'm about to say, everybody else has said the same, but I had to write it down because if I tried to shoot from the hip, I'd be a mess. So the first time I met Jim, sorry, it was three and a half years ago, I had coffee with him when I was running for council. He called me and arranged for us to meet, again, showing how much he cared about his community and the people that might serve in his community. We chatted for some time and it was apparent, we shared many of the same ideas. We had an instant bond, as he did with so many people. My first two years in the seat was so overwhelming, I had little knowledge of what I was doing. And this man mentored me on many subjects regarding council, but beyond that, he became a friend. No matter what day it was, he was always just a phone call or a text away and always with solid advice, encouraging me to make my own decision. I appreciated that advice because it was, because it always came from a place of good moral character and love for our community. He taught me to identify the problem and focus my energy on a solution. He gave me the courage to speak up and to voice my thoughts more. The one thing Jim always displayed that I truly admired was that even though we disagree, we're still a team. I disagreed with Jim on many occasions and sometimes it even got uncomfortable, but in the end, he always had a hug for me afterwards, letting me know that what we do up here is just business, it's not personal. I hope if there's one legacy of Jim that we can live on from here for many councils to come, it's that we all, that we're all working to make our community better, even if we disagree, and we can walk away from this dais knowing that what we fight for, what we believe to be right, and that it isn't personal and that we can walk away friends. Also that we can walk away hugging and shaking hands. And again, I'm going to miss him saying, hey kiddo. He'll be greatly missed.
I'd like to invite anyone from the audience who'd like to address City Council at this time.
My name is Tim Graham. I'm Jim's younger brother. I want to thank the council for taking the time to honor Jim on behalf of the family, what he meant to the city, what he meant to the council. I guess to sum it up, my brother was a good man and everybody you talked to, go through town, you knew Jimmy and you never went any place that you didn't stop and somebody talked to Jim. Doesn't matter if it was a restaurant, Home Depot, didn't matter, everybody, everybody knew him, everybody, he touched everybody's life, and that's obvious. He truly loved serving on the City Council. He took it seriously. It didn't matter if he was on vacation at someplace, he had his council book and he was studying his council book, getting ready for meetings, and he truly took it seriously in what he did for the council. One of the interesting things that I noticed when I was reading some articles on Jim yesterday and we were trying to put some stuff together for him, there was an article about five questions for a City Council member, and as I read through there, every single question, he talked about the citizens. And he truly and 100% believed, and he did, worked for the citizens of Canyon City, and he was good at it, and he was good for the city. And you're right, he'll be greatly lost, greatly missed, so. But again, thank you on behalf of the family and good luck with the council. Thank you.
As an order of business, councilmembers, we need to pass this resolution to commemorate Councilmember Meisner. I would like to ask for a motion. Councilmember Gonzalez?
I make a motion that we, where's my paperwork? That we approve or that we, is it approved?
Pass.
Approve Resolution Number 7, Series of 2021.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Haquez?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Hi.
Before we move on, I do just have a couple of comments. And Councilmember Dennehy, you mentioned that, well, we won't, the community doesn't know what we've lost, but we know what we've lost by the passing of Councilmember Jim Meisner and his decades of service and commitment to Canyon City. Each and every one of us as City Councilmembers are going to have to raise our bar to make up for the load that he bore, to make sure that his homework was done on behalf of every single person in Canyon City, to make sure that everything was accounted for. Doesn't matter if it was an I or a T or a word or a cent spent on behalf of our taxpayers. He questioned, he analyzed, and he held everyone accountable. And that includes me. He would hold me accountable too, and I was called out a couple of times, and that just gets you right here because Jim was a compass of integrity and I knew that he would call anyone out, including myself, to make sure that we stayed true to that compass of integrity, that what we did was right, that it was fair, it was equitable, and it was efficient. In my last, one of my last conversations with Jim, I was asking for some advice for our council, and he said, I just really want to make sure that everyone feels heard and accounted for. And I think that really sums up a part of Jim's, one of his other qualities, besides being hard and steadfast, he also had a heart of gold and you knew that he was his friend and that he had compassion and he cared. And he told us many times from this very spot, after a heated debate, whether I voted yea or you voted nay, after the vote was final, we'd all move forward with the final decision of council and we move forward in a positive direction in support of each other. And that is a legacy that will stay with us for a very, very long time. Jim was an amazing friend, a colleague, and the ultimate servant to Canyon City. And with that said, to the family of Jim Meisner, I have both the official resolution that was passed tonight in his honor and provided by Councilmember Reed, some flowers that we would like to come and give to you as the family. If you wouldn't mind coming forward so that we can offer our condolences to each of you, we would certainly appreciate it. The services to celebrate Jim Meisner's life will be this Saturday, March 6th, at 10:00 a.m. at the Canyon City High School Tiger Dome. Would definitely be honored to have you there as we celebrate his life and contributions. Just a moment for a deep breath here. We're going to move on to another recognition and proclamation, and this one is a proclamation thanking all service employees in both assisted living and nursing homes. And Councilmember Frank Haquez, I don't know if you want to introduce this resolution as you're the one that initiated it in light of the hard work that both the employees and residents of nursing homes during the COVID-19 pandemic have been really, really difficult and stressful. We want to make sure that they're recognized for the hard work that they have done and have, that they have gone through to ensure the safety of their residents and provide them the best life that they can have during their isolating time. And so Frank, do you want to offer any comments?
First of all, I want to thank Mayor Ashley. I did give her a call with regards to a call that I had received from a citizen. You know, we've had a lot of stuff going on with regards to people being isolated for so long and everything else. Some of the restrictions that we've had have been let up a little bit, so people are getting to enjoy being in other places. Hospitals have got a little bit better and everything, but the nursing homes is a different situation with regards to what they've been through and what they're going to continue to go through. So I mentioned that to her and I'm glad that she got this proclamation and I'll be glad to go ahead and read it, okay? Office and the mayor proclamation, whereas the City Council of Canyon City wishes to express appreciation for those making sacrifices during the fight against COVID-19, and whereas in Colorado, more than 70,000 people receiving long-term services and support in assisted living residents and nursing homes, and whereas the long-term services and support workforce includes certified nurses, aides, personal care workers, nurses, food service staff, housekeepers. nurses, food service staff, housekeepers, laundry maintenance, administration, social service staff, activity staff, and support personnel, and whereas, city council recognizes that some work is critical, and these jobs must be performed despite difficult circumstances, and whereas the long-term service and support workers have continued to support those they care for, taken important steps to minimize the spread of COVID-19, and worked tirelessly to ensure the safety of those in their care. Now therefore, in considers all this has been done, is being done, the City of Canyon City Council says, thank you to all long-term service employees in both assisted living residents, nursing homes. We are proud of you and the work you do in our community. This is the first day of May, March 2021.
Thank you, Councilmember Hockes, and we do have someone in the audience. Would you like to address council? You're here, come and address us.
I'm really sorry for your guys' loss. Just wanted to say that, but wow, I'm really nervous, but.
It's okay, we're friendly.
I'm a social services director at Progressive Care Center. Long-term care has been something I've been doing since I was a kid. My mom worked in it, and I just grew up volunteering. Seniors are really where my heart is, and specifically long-term care, because I just feel like it's a population that people don't often think about. Unfortunately, these people kind of get put into these facilities and we forget about them, and so I'm here to hopefully change that. I have big dreams. I really want to change long-term care as a whole, and I thank you guys for acknowledging us. Our staff puts in a lot of work, and it's really hard. It's hard seeing our residents living this way for so long, we're going on for about a year now, and it doesn't look like it's going to be changing anytime soon, unfortunately, so thank you guys for acknowledging us and all the work that we do. That's it.
Thank you for representing this community for us today.
Do I stay up here? Sorry, I don't know.
Are there any other comments from council?
You didn't tell the council your name.
Oh, I'm Callie Lucas.
Okay.
So, I just moved to Canyon City from the Springs. I was an activities assistant, and I just graduated with my master's from CSU-Pueblo, and so I got the social services director position at Progressive.
Great, thank you for being here tonight.
Yeah.
I definitely understand what's going on. My 95-year-old grandma, who we saw every day, we haven't been able to see as much as we'd like to, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again for being here tonight, we really appreciate it.
Of course, thank you.
And welcome to your first time at City Hall, we hope to see you again.
Thank you. Is it like every Monday at six, or?
First and third.
First and, I will be here more often, actually, so.
Yeah, yeah, we'll put you to work. Just for public record, we actually had a longer agenda for tonight, but in honor of Jim Meisner, I know as a council, we really wanted to be able to gather together. It was important for us to connect as a council and to mourn his loss together, but we did have just a couple of items that needed to be taken care of on our agenda, and we'll go ahead and review that consent agenda and agenda, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Item 9A is to approve the minutes for the regular city council meeting on February 15, 2021, the special city council meeting with the planning commission on February 10, and the 150th anniversary planning February 11, and the vision committee meeting on February 17. 9B appoints Darrell G. Robinson to the board of adjustments. 9C aboard awards bid number SO1-21, annual water meter registry, warranty purchase to Corin Maine of Henderson, Colorado, in an amount not to exceed $16,875. 9D authorizes the mayor to sign the ditch maintenance agreement for the Oil Creek Ditch for the Rhodes Avenue project. 9E authorizes electrical services installation at East Ridge Campground. 9F authorizes the city administrator to sign the Golden Age Center funding agreement. 9G authorizes the Zia Rides Mountain Bike Event in the Royal Gorge Park. 9H ratifies the mayor's signature on a letter of support for the Canyon City Fire District's grant with DOLA. 9I awards bid 2021, annual water meter and meter register purchase to Corin Maine of Henderson, Colorado, in an amount not to exceed $60,000, and 9J is to receive and file a list of bills.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick.
The, I do, we do have a couple of announcements we need to make, but let's take care of that after we deal with the agenda and consent agenda, and so unless someone has some questions or comments, I would move that we approve the agenda and consent agenda.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Councilmember Gonzalez.
I just had a question about the Zia Bike Event. What are we going on three years of this?
So, we had, the inaugural one was in 2019. We had to skip last year because of the COVID, so this will be the second official one.
Okay. It's great to see that they're back.
Yeah, and we've already had discussions with the Health Department, and Zia Rides has submitted a COVID protocol that's well beyond satisfactory.
Great, good, good to hear.
Any other discussion from council? Then I'll call vote, please.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick.
Aye.
Thank you, council. Let's go ahead and do council member, our council announcements.
So, I'd like to remind council that we do have a general government meeting Wednesday, this Wednesday at 5:00 here in these chambers, and in addition, we also have Wednesday morning our monthly KRLN interview.
We welcome any council member who wishes to participate in that to join in that conversation for KRLN, for sure. Any other announcements? All right, Administrator Stevens, can you please give us our report?
You have the written reports in your packets, I'm not going to go through that. There is one thing that I do want to announce. We, Chief Schick conducted some interviews, internal interviews for the commander position, and I'm pleased to say that Officer Tim Bell, Sergeant Tim Bell, has been promoted to commander.
I'm sorry, who?
Tim Bell.
Okay, I didn't hear.
And then we also have Tim Walsh, who's serving in interim capacity at this time.
What is Tim Walsh serving as?
He's serving as an interim commander at this point.
Oh, okay.
And with that, I would take any questions regarding the written report.
Any questions from council? Right, we're going to move on to item number 11, oh, Councilmember Reed.
Hey, Ryan, I was just wondering if you had any updates on activities and events or any of those things. Are we any closer to maybe having like something like Blossom or something like that?
So, Blossom, you know, they're having their internal discussions, you know, we've had, we've had meetings with the Health Department. Obviously, it would be a pared-down Blossom Festival. The high school bands are not traveling because of COVID and things like that. You know, what they're talking about is the potential for a reverse parade and maybe, you know, something along the lines of the craft fair, but those details are still, they're still working on those. In regards to just events and park permits, I met with Rex Brady earlier today. We're working on that and a timeline to actually have, you know, smaller, you know, family type of events and reserving park spaces, so those changes and announcements will be coming here in the next week or so.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Just, it got me thinking, has anybody heard anything about Whitewater?
As of right now, no. You know, Rick Harmon, the Economic Development Manager, he's on the Whitewater Board, so he's been working with the board, and, you know, they've been trying to plan and figure out what to do. You know, right now, with the restrictions where they are, even if we're at the highest, you know, least risky stage as far as the COVID protocols go, the most you can have an outside event would be 500 people, and that makes it really hard to put on a successful event and be able to make money.
So, I'm drawing a blank on the name of Selida's event that they do. Fibark, yes. They are on, so.
Well, they're, yeah.
So, they, so are there, and I think that they're lower on the dial than we are?
Well, we can take a look and see what they're doing. I know they ran last year as well, but it's, I believe it's a pared-down version.
Okay. Even if it's a pared-down.
Yeah, we can look into it.
It's worth looking into.
Definitely still need to be celebrating this year as a community. Let's move, are we ready to move on then? Item 11A, that's Fire Station Number Three, property 320 East Main Street, the annexation, zoning, and minor subdivision. Did you have, do you have anything you'd like to report?
Yeah, for ordinance number eight, actually for all ordinances, eight, nine, and 10, these are all second readings, we've not received any additional public comments, and staff would recommend passing on second reading.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that we approve on second reading and adoption by title only, ordinance eight, series of 2020.
A second.
It's 2021.
2021. Thank you.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick.
Aye.
Thank you, council. I'll now entertain a motion for item two, A2. Councilmember Gonzalez.
What number? If somebody else is ready, go ahead.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick.
Madam Mayor, I move on that we approve on second reading and adoption by title only, ordinance nine, series of 2021.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick.
Aye.
Thank you, council. Now we have item A3, and that is ordinance 10, series of 2021. Councilmember Smith.
Madam Mayor and council, I move that we adopt on second reading by title only, ordinance number 10, series of 2021.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? I'll call the vote, please.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick.
Aye.
Thank you, council, and in the greatest honor and respect for former council member Jim Meisner, I close this meeting.